Eight, ten, twelve inches high.
They're so different.
We are recording.
He's pulling off, telling him because he got in the clumps.
We got a minute.
All right.
I got some of them like this and others that are just all.
Saturday, the kids had a fishing derby there.
Yeah, yeah. Like, as plans already do their.
Wow.
And peas and beans.
Hmm.
Those are coming around.
That's kind of cool. Cool.
Yes.
All right, we're live on Facebook.
Okay, in the absence of a chair for tonight's meeting, I would look for a motion for chair.
I motion to nominate Dan Rodden.
Second.
Especially after what you said.
I have a motion by trustee Eckert and a second by trustee Romas to appoint Dan Rodden chair for this evening's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain. All right, I'll call this meeting, the Swamaco Village Board, to order. It is Monday, June twentieth at, I got six oh one P M. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Got a motion by trustee Ward.
Seconded.
Second by trustee Romas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number five, presentation, Swamaco Cemetery, Bayview Middle School cleanup event. Mr. K. Kerr.
All right, thank you. I'd like to invite Mike and Candace up to the front. Uh, we're gonna go over a little bit, uh, of a project they did out at the cemetery at the end of May. So with that, Mike, I'll just pass it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for, uh, having us here this evening. A few years ago, um, Kenny and I decided to start a community service project with some of the kids at Bayview. And we s- we settled on, uh, going out to the Swamaco Village Cemetery and doing some cleanup in there and straightening out in the spring. We first had started at the, a few of us went to, one morning in the spring. But then we saw the real need for it and we decided that the next fall and when we went back, we took the, what, a hundred and some kids with us out there. And, uh, you can see by the pictures, the kids, when they're out here in the cemetery, they really enjoy it. They look forward to it. They're incredibly industrious. They're really respectful and they're really inquisitive. You can see they go around and they read the stones. They try to find the oldest ones. And then at the end of the, after they do the cleanup, we go through and, uh, Ron Schultz is there. He's the sexton at the cemetery. So he t- tells us what he wants done. And then we planted some flowers around by the veterans memorial and in the flagpole at the front of the cemetery. And then, uh, the kids go around, they clean up all the headstones, they pick up all the brush and they, um, do, uh, some of the headstones that over the years have, are overgrown, so they pull all the grass off the base plates and everything else. So the cemetery looks really nice when they're done. They pick up all brush that's laying all over. And then, uh, at the end of the, the end of the day, the last thing we do is we go around and we put the flags on the veterans graves in the cemetery. And the kids are really, they really get into it because they go looking. I show them the different styles of headstones for the military. And they go through, looking through the whole cemetery and they go through and they place the flags there. And they respectfully, they, they look it up on the internet, correct? And then they, uh, so they do it the right way and, uh, they really, they really enjoy it. They're, um, this is our seventh graders this year, so they're, what, thirteen? And they were, uh, they were really good. They really did a nice job. They really got into it and, uh, they really enjoy it. They look forward to it every year. A couple of years, we couldn't do it because of the pandemic. But, uh, other than that, we started up again this, this spring and we hope to do it in the fall and in the spring of every, every year.
It really is a huge partnership. I don't know if you saw at the end, I did a lot of thank yous on there because it really has exploded. It started off where we had this and the district supported us by paying for our buses and, uh, the village of Swamaco had the porta potty and the equipment there. Um, but labors has come in. They've covered our buses every single time we've gone. Um, Pro Cuts Landscaping and Kim's Hardware, they have gone in and they supply all of the mulch for the veterans garden in the front there. It just really has taken on a life of its own. Um, Gallagher's Pizza, they, uh, way back when, I feel, um, they bought pizzas for this whole group after our cleanup in May that one time.
Twenty-seven or twenty-eight extra-large pizzas they brought up?
Fifty-one.
Was it fifty-one?
Yeah.
Oh.
I mean, we needed a whole classroom to put fifty-one pizzas around and, I mean, it was just really, it just really is cool because these kids then, I always say, they don't maybe know a single person in there, um, but this is their community and they've really embraced this. They're so looking forward because if you don't know, at Bayview, we actually keep the same kids from seventh to eighth grade. So I'm gonna have these same kids next year. So they already know that when I did my presentation into teaching them what we were gonna do, that this is what we do. We do a cleanup in October and we do then the veterans' flags and a memorial spring cleanup in May. And so they already know that we're going next year. And I couldn't believe how many kids, even in their reflections at the end of the week and at the end of the year, this was their most memorable thing that they did for the school year and that they're looking forward to doing it next year. So it, it really is a, a neat project, um, that all we started was organizing Mike's flags. And this is what it has blown up into and it's just, it's a great thing. So. I thank you for supporting us, um, because it is, it's a great project, something to really be proud of, so.
Well, thank you, Mike, and thank you, Candace, for coordinating such a fantastic program and we'll continue to support you however we can.
Yeah, it's been great. You guys have been great. We, there was a, the flagpole was getting in, being tough shape there, so I, we talked to the village there and they replaced the flagpole and the sign was, was, main sign of the cemetery was getting in rough shape for the last couple of years. The Cemetery Association Committee, we replaced the flag and it really looks nice. It really, it really is, um, doesn't look so, uh, like it's lost anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. That's nice. It's really nice.
It's a great event.
I would advocate for water out there.
Yeah. Sometimes, uh, because there are a lot of people that want to water and they're having a tough time now with it because there's not a source of water there. Everybody has to haul what water they need there.
Yep, we'll have that on our agenda in July for the Cemetery Committee.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Appreciate it. All right, number six, public appearances. Uh, this is a time that you can come forward and speak about things that are not on the agenda. Anybody want to come forward this evening?
I had a lady that called that thought it was a little excessive that we had a glossy full-color newsletter. That, let's keep in mind a budget time when we kind of look at the cost of things.
Very good. Anybody else? See none? We will move on. Consent agenda, previous minutes of the village board, six, six of twenty-two, temporarily picnic license, those of Swamaco Firefighters Association and waiver of fees, uh, May twenty, or May two thousand twenty-two municipal court report, May two thousand twenty-two fire report, the treasury report and the recreational report. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve it, but I want everybody to know that the WPS bill was still real high for the Mink Ranch facility. And I know Nick is working on it.
Yeah, we'll have a report in July.
I'm just gonna keep bringing it up though.
I know you are.
Because that's gotta go away.
No, I appreciate that, Michelle, because I, I agree that, that we should not be footing the bill for another business.
No, the, the sewer customers should not be footing the bill, the bill for it.
True. So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by trustee, uh, Eckert. Do I have a second?
Second.
Trusted, second by trustee Andrews. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Administrative items, resolution two-two zero-one-five, amending the speed limit on Pine Lane. Administrator K. Kerr?
All right, so, uh, at the most recent Public Health and Safety Committee meeting, the committee recommended that the village board reduce the speed limit on Pine Lane from forty-five to thirty-five miles per hour. And should the village board wish to grant this request, the motion would be to approve the request via resolution twenty-two zero-one-five. And Deputy Pisani is here to elaborate on the request and the nuances on Pine Lane. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Deputy Pisani.
So just to give a little bit of a background, um, and information from the speed study. Uh, obviously Pine Lane is located in the northwest portion of the village. Uh, it is a main arterial road connecting County Highway B up into O'Connell County. Uh, it is currently posted at forty-five miles an hour. It is almost exactly two miles in length. This is one of the longer, uh, stretches of roadway that we've looked at as far as adjusting the speed limit. Uh, with that, there are thirty-four driveways, all to residences there, uh, seven T intersections and three four-way intersections. Uh, it is a twenty-two-foot paved asphalt two-lane roadway with gravel shoulders, no sidewalks, no curbs, and does have steep ditches. Uh, the roadway is straight with five elevation changes. Uh, the eighty-fifth percentile, uh, on Pine Lane near Crystal Creek, that is the northern portion of Pine Lane, was fifty-one point nine one miles per hour with a veh- vehicle count of six thousand three hundred and fifty-seven vehicles. The eighty-fifth percentile of Pine Lane and Crystal Creek Court northbound was fifty-one point seven eight miles per hour with twelve thousand one hundred and seventy-eight vehicle count. Uh, the crash history in the past ten years included thirty-one vehicle crashes that were reported. Uh, twenty-two of those were car versus animal. Uh, seven of those were one-vehicle crashes. And of those one-vehicle crashes, five of them were attributed to, uh, snow or ice on the roadway. Uh, one was an OWI and the other was, uh, an intent of driving issue. There were two, two-vehicle crashes, one of which was a failure to yield while making a left turn onto a roadway. And the other was a, uh, vehicle that had rear-ended, another vehicle that had stopped for a school bus. So that was an intent of driving issue. There were no speed-related, uh, crashes in the past ten years that had been reported. So with that being said, um, I think it's important to kind of understand where this information comes from and why it's included in the report. Uh, so if you have, um, some time here, I'll kind of go through a, a little bit of background information.
Well, I'm kind of concerned, like last time, we lowered one that I, I didn't agree with because, y- you know, if you're trying to get to, like Northwoods or to St. Pat's, now you're rerouting traffic. Like this one says it's an arterial, arterial road. You're gonna be changing the course of traffic because they're gonna be avoiding that and it, it's not necessarily the road of just the people that live there. This, the money for these roads is in our general fund. Um, it's everybody's road. And now they're avoiding these roads and going to other ones. So for that reason, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not in favor of lowering this one either.
That is a good point. The, um, vehicle counts do show that there's a significant number of, uh, vehicles that travel that roadway that don't reside on, on that roadway. Uh, it does affect a lot of other people. So that's something to consider. Uh, but the information that I'm gonna be providing, uh, for you today, um, comes from several different sources. These are national sources. Uh, the American Association of State and Highway Transportation Officials, uh, the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, uh, the National Cooperative Highway Research Program, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, um, Andy's favorite, the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. So all the information and statistics that I'll provide, uh, come from those sources. So it's important to look at the eighty-fifth percentile speed. And these sources, um, do state the eighty-fifth percentile speed is the predominant factor used in setting speed limits. Uh, survey conducted, um, by the National Cooperative Highway Research Program, um, found that ninety-nine percent of those agencies surveyed utilized the eighty-fifth percentile as a predominant factor in determining their speeds on the roadways. Uh, most, some, it is important to know that most jurisdictions do allow for deviations from the eighty-fifth percentile, with many being between five and ten miles per hour. Uh, so it's not uncommon to deviate somewhat from that, um, with reason, with justification. And there are several different reasons, uh, provided that kind of justify that deviation. The top three factors in, um, used to establish posted speeds are accident, uh, history. That's third at seventy-nine percent. Uh, roadside development, uh, driveways, um, industrial zones, things like that, at eighty-five percent. And the number one, uh, factor was, uh, the eighty-fifth percentile speed. Those are the top three, um, factors that are used to determine what is, what an appropriate speed limit would be. And those we do include in, in our report. So I know there are arguments that, uh, arguments for and against utilizing the eighty-fifth percentile speed, uh, for determining what an appropriate speed limit would be. Every, uh, research, uh, study or paper or article that I've found, um, against the eighty-fifth percentile, all gears toward, um, urban roadways, uh, multiple-lane urban roadways. Uh, they actually acknowledge that the eighty-fifth percentile speed, um, was originated for, uh, two-lane rural roads, uh, which is what Swamaco has. So that argument is always going to be there, but I think we need to look at where that argument came from. And if it's applicable to our situation. Uh, the other, another, I guess, idea that had been brought up is that lowering speed limits actually slows cars down. There have been numerous studies, uh, completed that dispute that. A recent, uh, study that I had found, found that for every five miles per hour, the speed limit is lowered. It actually only lowers, um, the average speed at one, one and a quarter mile per hour. Uh, it doesn't have that much effect. Visible and active law enforcement does reduce speed. However, that is, that is temporary. The greater the, uh, distance and time from that enforcement, um, that speed returns to what someone's normally gonna drive at. The eighty-fifth percentile isn't only used for, um, speed determination. It's used for the placement of signs and signals, um, determining minimum passing, uh, site distances for no-passing zones, um, determining required distance for lane reduction, uh, placement of crosswalk markings and, uh, appropriate size of signage. So it is utilized in other areas and it is supported. There's also kind of a thought that everybody drives five miles per hour over the speed limit. We've had our speed board out in several locations, uh, in the village. And, um, there was one location, um, that I have here, uh, where the eighty-fifth percentile was actually, uh, five miles per hour over what the posted speed limit was. So that's not exactly accurate. Um, in fact, much of, um, many of the eighty-fifth percentile speeds were actually slightly lower than what the speed limit was. Just kind of some things to consider.
So we'll pass that back to the village board for discussion and Mark is obviously here to answer any questions that you may have from a law enforcement perspective.
So I can kind of give an overview of why we came to a unanimous decision to lower it to thirty-five. Uh, I think there was four or five folks here, uh, that live on that street, uh, including Chief Bertler, uh, that grew up on that street. A lot of conversation, a, a lot of conversation about near misses. And there's no data to support near misses, uh, on that roadway. But a lot of things that we discussed, um, is the growth in O'Connell and them utilizing that road as a straight shot to get to B and then down to forty-one. There's a suggestion that some of that traffic, uh, has greatly increased because of the increase in, uh, buildings, you know, just north of here in O'Connell, that all funnel down Pine Lane down to B. So another conversation piece was the campsites now, uh, that are opening up in the reforestation camp that you're gonna have, you know, more bik- bikers in that area. Uh, you're gonna have more people walking, uh, from those campsites and, and utilizing that road. Uh, one other point that was brought up was the ATV, UTV, um, speeds on that road are actually thirty-five miles an hour. Uh, so it's a different posted speed limit for ATVs, UTVs. And, um, I, I think, again, the biggest factor, and I think Joe alluded to it and several people in the audience that have lived on that street for a long time, uh, was the increase in traffic. Um, you know, that, that one way you have, and I don't know if it's north or south, but seventeen hundred and forty cars a day and the other way is nine hundred cars a day traveling that roadway, which has very steep ditches. And if you actually look at the, the gravel shoulders, there isn't much there. The folks that were here from that street, um, really talked about near misses, you know, how difficult it is to back out of your driveway. You can't do it anymore. You almost have to turn around and come out. So there's a lot of great discussion, a lot of conversation. But the other part of the conversation was just lowering the speed limit to thirty-five isn't going to change behavior, especially on that particular road. So we talked about, you know, what does it look like to get some stop signs and we didn't know, uh, from a committee perspective, what that process was to add a stop sign at, at some of those four-way intersections. Um, one of those intersections is, where are we? So Thorn Hill Trail or Rose Haven Trail, that intersection there. So there is a, a pretty steep hill right about where the P is on Pine Lane. Um, and there's a lot of traffic that comes out of both of those. Uh, that's a four-way intersection. And, uh, I, I have a friend that lives down Thorn Hill Trail. And when you exit that subdivision, you better get on it because if someone's coming over that hill, um, you know, you could get rear-ended, so. And again, the data doesn't show near misses. The data doesn't provide any information about how many near misses there is on that street every day. So it was a long, great conversation, uh, at our committee level. And, uh, I don't remember, Joe, do you remember who made the? Anyways, we made a motion and it, and it passed unanimously to, to lower the speed limit. Along with that, oh, I think I, actually I made the motion because along with that, we talked about putting some signs below some of the speed limit signs that says radar enforced area or law enforcement area. We talked about the stop signs, uh, as well. So, uh, one other thing before we actually get into discussion on this, a conversation last week, our last meeting, was about ATV, UTVs and why we don't have a process in place to remove them, you know, from a particular street if there's a petition. You know, I, it didn't come to me why, and I was trying to figure out why we didn't have a process. Uh, it did come to me at a later point that ATVs and UTVs are a mode of transportation out here in Swamaco. They're an approved mode of transportation. And if we start allowing particular streets to be petitioned, not to be, uh, allowed to drive on, that opens the door to say, hey, this particular street doesn't want mopeds or this street doesn't want pickup trucks on theirs, so we don't want to open that box. And that's why we never, uh, created a process, uh, to remove a street from the ATV, UTV, uh, via just petition of people that don't want it on that street. So that was just a side note, uh, on that. So that's, that's kind of what we had from the committee level. I guess, uh, let's have some conversation here about, you know, what our thoughts are at this level.
Well, you know my thoughts. What, so what, what is the, um, speed limit on, on Oakdale and reforestation?
So there's a section of reforestation road that's forty-five. Um, it, I think it's entirety until you get to Sunrise, right? Then it goes to twenty-five? Is that right?
It's twenty-five in front of the zoo.
Yeah. Prior to that.
It's forty-five?
Yeah.
So everybody's gonna reroute, you know?
They can't, they can't get nor, they can't get north. That's the thing. They can't get north. So if we drop this to thirty-five, the true people that will impact is obviously our residents and a lot of those want that. Want it reduced on this road. From, from our understanding, from the committee level, there's a lot of, of want because people are having difficulty backing out of the driveway. I did have a conversation with someone from O'Connell, uh, that had a lot to say about us reducing that speed limit and how upset she would be if we reduced it. And to be perfectly frank, I couldn't care less what she thinks. Uh, she's not a resident of Swamaco.
I understand that, but there, there'll be plenty that go through there that aren't necessarily, that are also Swamaco residents.
Right.
Just like now we're, we're pulling, who brought this, who brought this one up? Is it?
It was a resident that requested the reduction.
So, I mean, we're, we're lowering them all in one spot and then we're creating different traffic routes and all the others. And I think it's just gonna turn into a mess and I'm, I'm not for it.
And this is where I'll, I'll agree to disagree with you on traffic changes. Yes, you may have people go other ways, but most of that O'Connell County traffic, if, they'll go a different way, out to forty-one. And then so be it.
And so will Swamaco traffic.
Not necessarily because if they're, if they're in Swamaco and they're coming down to B to get out, they'll still travel that road. Again, you're, you're a two-mile distance. If you look at that, it's about less than twenty-second difference, um, to travel that thirty-five versus forty-five.
So, so from that standpoint, if it's only twenty seconds, I really don't see where you're going to have people change their route. If they're taking that way simply because it's shorter to begin with for them to get there.
Right, but if you add a, right.
You're gonna try to tell people to go out of their way? I, I don't think people will do that.
People from O'Connell? Potentially. And I think the other thing that we talked about at the committee level is adding stop signs. So that will actually slow the traffic, uh, on that street. I, I don't know who on this board travels that road. I do from time to time and
Sometimes I do.
It's crazy how fast people are moving on that road.
I can just make a comment that I had an experience where I, uh, my wife and I were walking, I believe it was Westview, and we decided to make a, uh, go around and then come back up to reforestation road on Sunrise on foot, um, which we later learned was a big mistake because I know what we say that shoulder is supposed to be. But there are spots, if it's, if it's four inches of gravel and if you don't catch it just right, you're gonna slide, you know, down the side of a hill. It was a little unnerving because where are you gonna go other than jump down a steep embankment, um, in some of those spots, so? And when they're doing fifty-one, fifty-two miles an hour when they're coming by you, that's, uh, that's an experience. And I, anybody who lives along there, I hope they don't think they're ever gonna walk or bike or do anything on that road.
A lot of them have stopped doing that. They said the, the thing that they don't like now is getting out of their dri- literally getting out of their driveway.
Yeah.
Or getting out of their subdivisions.
Yeah, my kid had a friend a little farther up, um, and getting out of that driveway was a beast. They were thinking of putting in a turnaround so you could always come out at least face-first, not trying to back out.
Mike, you have a couple of things.
So, uh, just a quick question regarding the one-point-two-five mile per hour, uh, decrease. Was that study taken within the first year of the decrease? Because I have a friend who would take Jay back when it was fifty-five. And this friend, when Jay turned to forty-five, kept forgetting because he's a creature of habit. And he would be doing fifty-five to sixty on Jay and realize, oh, shoot, I gotta slow down. That lasted a couple of years because he's an older person. Okay, it's me. I admit it. So, anyway, so what would happen is, then you get accustomed to it, right? And you start slowing down. You start going closer to that forty-five mile per hour speed limit. So I'm curious, does that one-point-two-five relate? Did they give you a timeframe of when that study was given relative to when the speed limit was changed?
That information I do not have.
Okay, that's fine.
But that is a, a valid concern then and something to be, um,
It could be skewed data.
Considered of, um, that somebody then walking on Pine Lane, um, thinking motors are gonna be going thirty-five. They may be going forty-five, fifty, um, and that situation is, is not the best.
Thank you. And then, uh, regarding the committee decision, so is there, uh, any kind of a petition that came with this for the group of residents? Was there something where we can look at this and, just to be consistent with what we did last week?
There was, no petition.
Okay.
Nope.
That would be my hangup with this because I, I couldn't talk to this person last week and say, hey, you need a petition. And then this week go, hmm, it's fine. No petition needed. That's, that's all I really have to say on it.
Okay. Anybody else?
So out of the ten years, thirty-one vehicle crashes and not one of them was related to speed.
That's correct.
I mean, I can see that and it's like. I mean, I can see that, and it's like, I mean, okay, ice, maybe they were going too fast for the conditions, but I, I have a little problem with this myself. I mean, I, you wanna add a four-way stop at a certain area, I support that. Pretty soon we're gonna be changing all the thirty-fives to twenty-five, just because. So, I don't know, I don't support this.
Chief Perler, do you have anything?
Um, like I said, the committee did vote in favor, I think, I've lived there for numerous years. You know, there is increased traffic on that, I mean, there's four subdivisions that went in the last probably ten, fifteen years. And then obviously all the subdivisions to the north, on North Pine Road, which is north, but, you know, we debated eighty-fifth percentile as well. I mean, we took a lot of factors, we know that, we did talk about that, you know, lowering this to thirty-five is not gonna make everybody go thirty-five either. You know, that's why the committee kinda, we knew we'd come back here, you know, addition of stop signs or whatever it may be, to reduce that, that speed somehow, I mean, law enforcement can only be out there so much. You know, if, if they sit out there all the time, the southern part of Swamp was gonna complain about speeding, so. You know, like, that's kind of why we brought it back to you. It was a request from citizens, we took their concerns, and I've lived there for, I grew up there, and then my parents live out there, and I've seen that high rate of traffic or high rate of speed out there for numerous years, and to your concern, it is tough to get out of your driveway or out of the subdivision. So, that's why the committee did vote in favor, knowing all that, we are going against the eighty-fifth percentile as well.
I'll just say, I, I don't put a whole lot of weight in eighty-fifth percentile. I feel like your average citizen, myself included, will adjust to a lower speed limit. It just takes some time, some time, you know, but respect the fact that this posted, that's the law. And you don't just say, eh, doesn't apply to me, right? My hangup, and my only hangup, because I do believe that we're in a different world. We're in a world where more people are biking, more people are walking, we're seeing a lot more of that. My only hangup is that I don't really have a good sense of what the group of people who live along Pine feel as a whole. And I think that's, I'm repeating myself, so I'll stop.
No, I, I agree, I mean, your methodology is sound when you, when you... So do I have a motion by anyone?
I just wanted to know if anyone is here to speak for us, so I'll open up the floor.
Is anybody here to speak on this subject? Alright, no need.
I would motion to table then.
Do you motion on the table, or do we have to make a motion to deny?
Yeah, you can make a motion to table it. We'll bring it back to the next meeting.
With a petition? I'd like to see how the...
Well, we can, we can reply to the person who made the initial request.
Okay.
And say that the village board is looking for a more formal petition. And if we get it, we can bring that to a future board meeting.
Are you making that motion? Because I will make it to grant it if we wanna try that vote.
So I have a motion on the floor to table this subject, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Motion carries three to two.
I, I don't think everything should be set by petition either. I could, I could get some wild, wild petitions if you want them.
I, I agree.
And I wouldn't base my judgments off of that either.
If it was a question of fundamental liberties, fundamental rights, absolutely petitions mean little to me. But when we're dealing with a community, a group of people live on a particular road, my right to take that road is there. My right to drive that speed limit on the road is not. You know, I don't, I don't get to just say, hey, I want that road to be forty-five, I, I'm trying to be conscious of the fact that there are families who live on the road, and they're trying to, to live their lives as whole as they, as they can. That's how I look at it.
So the, the course of action should have been that, there should have been a petition put together already. I mean, that's typically how we, we do stuff, and none of that happened here.
Well, this is, actually, I'd say this is kind of new, we haven't really required a petition. This is kind of a change in mindset over the last couple of meetings.
As I know.
Well, we had a, we had, excuse me, there was a petition that went on for the reduction of the speed limit on St.
They did, but we didn't require it.
No, we didn't require it. But it's, it's usually what you can tell the people when they first start coming, coming in. Is, you know, when they first came to the Health and Safety Committee, you know, they probably should have suggested to them that, you know, if you feel this way, you know, talk to your neighbors.
So there was...
So perhaps the, the better format is at the Public Health and Safety Committee meeting, we make it known that they need a petition before they'll make a recommendation to the village board. If that's gonna be something that the village board is gonna require that they have.
We, I'm, I'm looking for more support. How many people are really supporting this, you know, that live in that area?
And if there's not a, if there's not an overarching problem, like say for instance, there was, you know, X number of accidents every year because of speed, well, that would be different, right? Because then we're reacting to a clear and present problem. This isn't as clear, there is a many deer accidents, you know, and that, unfortunately, that's life in the country, right? Of the accidents that are on this list, would any of them then stop by reduce speed? And I think you admitted that probably maybe one or two none, I think is what you may have said. So there's not a, there's not a, a need, if you know what I'm saying, a demanding need. So now it becomes a question of the people who live in the area, for me. And they are the ones who have to live with this every day, I don't. I, I can choose a different way to drive somewhere, right? They're the ones who maybe wanna go on a walk along the road with their kids, et cetera, so that's why I feel a petition is important. It also helps the particular resident maybe gauge whether their concerns are held by their neighbors. So, I might say, oh, it's really too, it's crazy here, I can't, I can't stand walking on this road, and my other neighbor's like, eh, it's nothing, used to it. You know, that kind of thing, so there.
So, I don't think I'm gonna change the way, and I don't, I don't chair the Public Health and Safety meetings anymore, but I, I don't think that we're gonna change the methodology of how we make recommendations to the board. I think we may encourage folks, if we do make a recommendation to the board to lower the speed limit, like in this case, hey, before the board meeting or before the village board meeting, you may wanna put together a petition, because that will solidify or help solidify your position on this. You know, whether we make a recommendation either way, I mean, think about it now, there's two recommendations that the committee has made to this board, and, and we've given two different answers. So, you know, we did that on Hidden Lake, and we did it now tonight, so. You know, I think we'll continue running the committee as such, but make, make it known that, you know, a petition would be, helps in their case at the board level.
It's, it's not gonna help in my case, because I think it's a very strange precedence we're setting. What if everybody else in the community didn't want it and had their own petition saying, no, we don't want it? Because it is technically everyone's road. I, this, I, are, are people gonna be allowed to sign this petition if they don't live on the road? Are they gonna have a petition against it? Are they, this, this is a strange precedence.
Here's where I do disagree with you, Michelle, because I don't live on that road, like Mike said, I don't live on that road. If I have to drive thirty-five, I have to drive thirty-five instead of forty-five, I'm okay with that. I think it's more of, the people that live on that road should have more of a voice on things that happen in their area. And, and if they're, if they, every morning when they leave, they can't get out of their driveway because, you know, there's cars coming from the north that, that continue to increase every morning, that you have to sit there for X amount of time to get out of your driveway to find an opening, I don't deal with that, I don't live on that road. You know, so, so I think the, the weight of a petition from the people that actually are affected, I, I think does come into play.
Yeah, I live on Harbor Lights, and that twenty-five mile an hour zone does not help at all, I guarantee you, right? I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't matter at all. People fly down that road, and a bunch of signs with stricter laws aren't gonna help anybody, and some weird petition precedence is just going down a very strange road. Are you gonna accept that petition if they do not live on that road? Is that gonna be part of the criteria?
I think no one's...
Then you don't listen to those residents?
I don't think anybody said that the petition was the, the be-all, end-all. I think it, I think I used the word helped someone's case. I didn't say solves their case, I said helps.
So now they go through all that work, and then you don't listen again, and I mean, I think it's just the board not making a decision is what it is. But, okay.
It's the board being respectful of the people directly impacted.
I, I am respectful of them, and that's why I'm here every single time.
Yeah. I'm talking about the people directly impacted, the people who live on that road are important. And I, they are more important than my rights to that road, even though it's a village road. They live on the road, they have their families on the road, they use that, that area. So for me, yeah, it is more important, their needs are more important than mine.
Alright. Administrative item B, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three liquor license amendments. Madam Clerk.
I'm happy for you, three liquor license amendment applications that were presented to the clerk's office. They were reviewed by the clerk and also by our officers, Officer Pisani. And we are recommending approval of all three applications. For Gallagher's Pizza, they are adding a patio area. Eight-eight-eight Cheese is adding a patio area. And Watersfront is adding their Ball Diamond.
So how does that amendment, so can they, can they add a patio area pretty much at any time throughout the year?
Yes.
Okay. And, and does that, does that cost more, or it's just, it just has to be within?
They would have to pay for the publication, and that would be about, that would be it.
Okay.
Their liquor license is a, is a set price.
Okay. And what, what would the publication, okay?
Publication fees are twenty-five dollars.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You know, hats off to all of those guys to expand the opportunity to one of their establishments to, you know, different venues to sit at. And also adding the Ball Diamond back, I don't know how many years that, that Ball Diamond wasn't being used, and it's kind of cool passing there now and seeing people use it.
I think it was two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen, yeah, when the flood came through. But they restored it last year, and it looks great, and I'm glad they're utilizing it, so, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three liquor license amendments. One, Gallagher's Accusation LLC, Gallagher's Pizza, twenty-three oh-six Lineville Road, for the add patio area, and Eight-eight-eight Cheese and Company LLC, Eight-eight-eight Cheese and Company, fifteen eighty-two Lineville Road, add patio area. And the third one, Swamaco H-two-oh LLC, Watersfront, three-one-seven-one School Lane, add the Ball Diamond area.
Alright, so I have a motion on the floor by Trustee Andrews to approve the liquor license amendments as presented, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, my trustee Romes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries to zero.
Thanks for coming, Brandon.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Did you wanna?
Eight-eight-eight Cheese and Company.
Ah, very nice.
Thank you.
Alright, administrative item number, or letter C, twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-three Strategic Plan Progress Report, and Mr. K. Kerry.
Alright, thank you. So, with the approval of the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-three strategic plan, I did mention that I wanted to kind of review it every year, just to check in and see how we're doing on things, and see where possible edits need to be made. And so I won't go through every single one, but I'll pick out at least one from each emphasis. So the first area of emphasis was maintaining and enhancing the quality of life. I wanna talk a little bit about the Calvera Park Master Plan. So, the objective was to implement Phase One and Two by the end of two thousand twenty-three. We have added the parking lot, we did a stormwater pond, and then Hurricane Fire is currently constructing a shed. There is still over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of projects that's to add some soccer fields as well as a new softball field. We are in a fundraising campaign, we will continue to research and apply for grant opportunities as they come up. That goal of finishing One and Two by the end of two thousand twenty-three may be a little lofty. But, like I said, we'll continue to try to find revenue sources to do that. Maybe one day the Wetland Mitigation Bank will provide some monies, if that's what the village board wants to do with it. But just wanna make sure you're aware that we are working on it, it just may be a little bit too pricey to complete that quickly. Are there any questions about anything else on this first area of emphasis? Second area of emphasis was ensuring fiscal stability. I just wanna highlight that one of the struggles we had every year with the budgeting process was, at least at a staffing level, was not sure exactly what the village board was hoping to see when we came with a recommended budget. And so we set this metric of approving an annual general fund budget that did not increase the tax levy more than the CPIU plus a quarter percent, except for January of that budget year, or the previous five-year average of the tax levy percentage increase, whichever is higher. So for the last two years, based on that metric, the max levy increase was about three-point-two-nine, three-point-three-three percent. And we have, over those two years, increased it by two-point-nine-eight percent, and then last year was a three-point-zero-one percent. So we are meeting that metric, I will just kind of forewarn you or make sure you're thinking about, the CPIU right now goes out to November of two thousand twenty-two, and that number is at six-point-eight-six percent, numbers that we've never seen before. It probably will be around seven percent by the time it gets to January of two thousand twenty-three. That's not to say that we're gonna raise the levy by seven percent, but that's just something that we're fighting is the rate of inflation, just like all of us are in our, our daily lives, so just be aware of that. Any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, with that, I think that's your last item there, that we have a big task on our hands come budget time, to make sure that we are meeting the requirements of our community. Kind of uncharted waters with, with CPI, but I don't think we need to really focus solely on CPI when we do our budgets. You know, it's, it's needs, it's, you know, maybe buckling our, our belt straps a little bit here this year, because, you know, I, I think employee compensation needs to stay strong, because the daily lives of our employees and the things that they're buying at the grocery store or getting gas have increased, but I think, you know, when we talk about needs versus wants, I think we need to stick with our needs in this budget cycle and, and kind of put the, the wants off. And, and that's just, I'm just one voice in the board.
Definitely.
But I think this is an imperative budget cycle that, that we need to, to be frugal.
And we have some things working for us, I don't have the numbers yet, but I think we had a really strong construction season in two thousand twenty-one that will help. And then we have some debt service levy that's coming off the books next year that will also assist in making sure that we keep that tax rate increase if there is any level.
Right. I, I think something else that's coming as well, and they're already starting to see it, is I think we're at the top of where our housing market's gonna be, just from conversations I had with different realtors, and so it'd be very interesting, you know, and our budget really isn't affected this year by that. But I know that other boards within this community, we have some struggles, especially if they don't have their annual increase built in, like they have year over year, so. It's gonna be very interesting, the tax bills this year, and I think we need to do our part as a village to make sure we're staying strong.
I agree. Any other questions on that one? Okay. Area of emphasis number three was ensuring stakeholders are well-informed and engaged on municipal matters. One that I wanted to point out is, when we initially set this plan, out, we talked about posting meeting agendas on Facebook, and I think the idea was to have all of our meeting agendas posted on Facebook. And I think I realized quite early on that we have a lot of meetings, and if we were to post every single agenda... And if we were to post every single agenda from every committee and commission, I think we'd be flooding our agenda, or flooding our Facebook feed to the point that people would stop paying attention to it. They would just start ignoring it because they're constantly blasted by the Village of Swamaco. So I've only been putting the village board agendas on Facebook. If the village board wants me to start doing all of them, I'm happy to listen to you and do that. It's really not a whole lot of effort. I just thought it would be best for our fee to keep it to only village board agendas.
I, I concur.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
That's good.
I would, I, I would like to see our Facebook page and kudos to you for all of your efforts. And, you know, I see your pop-ups. I know most of the time it's you that's doing it because you put AK at the end of all your posts. But I'd like to see other departments utilize our Facebook. I know they have their own, like, you know, Recreation has your own Facebook page, but I think people, most people are dialed into just the village Facebook page. And I'd like to see some more activity from the different departments on there, highlighting things that are going on in their departments. You know, road work, you know, fire department, come, you know, some of those things. I think it would be good to, to see out there on the Facebook page to keep activity, you know. A post, we should make a, and I don't know what that is. I don't know what the metric is, but, you know, is it one post a day or one post every other day? I don't know where that engagement lies. You know, where, where it's overboard or where it's about right on. I don't know where that is, but, you know, make sure that we set that matrix that, that we're putting enough posts out there to, to continue to gain interest. How, how much is our following increase, by the way?
On Facebook, I wish I would have been keeping track. I know we're up over two thousand on our own Facebook page. I think Fire's got three thousand?
Every likes it.
Three-five-hundred?
Who's telling?
And Face, and Park and Rec just started. So they, they created an account, Nick created the account maybe a month ago-ish, two months, and he's got around three hundred or so.
Just under four hundred.
Okay. But the other thing I wanted to point out too is that monthly e-newsletter. So that's something I started in January of two thousand twenty-one. Obviously, we had no subscribers and now we've got five hundred and eighty-six. I'd like to think that that's one per household. And if we keep going on the path that we're going, that's a pretty significant amount of people in our village who's getting that monthly e-newsletter right to their email address. So I'm excited to, to see that kind of progress.
I think we're doing a great job of, you know, we always got these comments from residents. I didn't hear about that, I didn't know about that, you know. I think that's, that's really starting to dwindle now that we, that we're blasting out on social media more and, you know, the e-newsletter. So it's great that we're actually getting involved electronically at our village, so. And just so you know, Chief Bertler, I think Swamaco Police still has you beat, so.
We'll work on that, trust me.
I just want to point that out to you.
Okay, any questions on this?
I don't think Dan should be starting a feud.
Okay.
Oh, they have an adorable feud.
That we do.
Emphasis four was ensuring adequate infrastructure, facilities, equipment, and staffing levels. What I wanted to point out is four point four, which is bringing well number two back online in two thousand twenty-one. As you all should be aware, we've basically made the decision that we're not gonna bring well number two back online and the focus is on installing a new well and that is actively occurring. Hopefully, in the next couple of months here, Andy will have a better understanding if we're able to put well number five out at Northwood Road and we'll go from there. But that's, that's something that I want to point out in this plan, that it's really a working document. Just because it's on our strategic plan doesn't mean necessarily that we're one hundred percent gonna do it. We need to be able to adapt as, as things change. And then the other thing I want to point out, since we started talking about budget. So in our strategic plan, we talked about adding a full-time firefighter in two thousand twenty-three. Obviously, there's a significant cost. That's something that we'll just have to look at when the numbers shake out and see if that's something that's viable for us. They did add two part-time firefighters in two thousand twenty-two. Chief may argue why that's not enough, but that's something that we'll just have to have a conversation on once we get to budget season. And that might be something that I'll put specifically on the side that says, hey, if you really want to continue with this, this is the impact of adding a full-time firefighter. If you're okay with it, great, it's gonna add, you know, point four percent to the tax rate, whatever it might be. I might just put that as an option.
And you can check mark four point two, right? That's done.
Yeah.
We have a third one location.
Yes, yep, four point two is completed, yep.
Can you add a column that says completed or not, maybe?
My green was completed or.
Okay.
It's my fancy, fancy way of.
Oh, it's outside the chart.
Either it's on track or it's completed. But I could add yes, that shouldn't be a problem.
I didn't, I didn't realize that.
Because it's outside of the chart.
Right.
I'll do better next time. Any other questions on this one? Okay. And the last area of emphasis was promote quality and sustainable economic and community development. The trail plan is currently underway. Fortunate that Brown County has a program that we're able to do it at no cost. Initially, we thought it might cost us ten, fifteen thousand to do. So Nick is working on getting responses. I think you have, what, three hundred survey responses so far? And we'll keep that open until the end of July and hopefully have that, that project finished by the end of the year. Any other questions on this one? If not, that's all I have for that. Kind of wanted to just start the conversation. Obviously, this plan is two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-three. When we created this plan, we had a survey that went out to all the residents. It was a postcard that went out to all residents in February or March of two thousand twenty. So that means if you want to have a strategic plan for two thousand twenty-fourth or two thousand twenty-six, that's something that next, next winter, you'd have a survey going out to the community. My question to you is kind of twofold. One, did you like the process that we went through for this strategic plan? Or do you want something maybe a little more involved, a little more in-depth? There are certainly consultants out there that will organize this for us and be a little more fancy with their charts. Just curious to see how you felt about this process and if it's something you just want to copy and paste or do something different with.
We definitely don't need to be more fancy. We can't afford to be doing that. But I, I mean, is there much value to it?
I think it's really nice for us as staff to have it during our budgeting process to kind of give us guidance on what are the priorities of the community and the village board.
I would just appreciate that. We can't always use it as our only answer, but just to kind of litmus test, how, how do people feel about this? We've already had the discussion that a lot of people say they want trails, but when they find out how much the trail costs, that they don't want a trail. I, but I still think we need to understand and know what they want and.
Well, that's the problem. We had that discussion and in that process, I was talking about the surveys that don't say anything. And, and the fact that maybe we could put something that indicates how much these kind of things cost. And we've talked about that already, but it didn't happen. And that's, that's not on you. Everybody seemed to forget about that. And when we create like the park and trail plan, you even said that's a wish list. But when people fill out those surveys, do they, do they, you know, they, they need to understand that and they need to understand how much these things cost.
And one of the-
Some people do, and I don't think those are the people responding to the survey.
Sure.
Unfortunately.
I hear you and I wish we could put a dollar or a price sign next to every single question, but some of the challenges are like, if you want a trail along Harbor Lights Road, well, is it a four-foot trail? Is it a six-foot trail? Is it a ten-foot trail? Is it gonna be just crushed stone? Is it gonna be paved?
Why are you using my road?
Well, I'm just saying, when you have a survey question, it's tough to say that it's gonna cost X amount because we don't, we don't even know yet what the specs would be of that project. It's such a wide range, it's difficult to do that. So we're kind of just, this is really high level, kind of what are you looking for as a community?
I realize it's almost impossible to do, but it's, it's always painted as such a great thing until it's time to pay for it. So.
I, I would agree with you, Michelle, but it is, it's, you know, you, yes, they're high level, but when people go, okay, it's gonna cost that much, eh, maybe not. But I think that's where we come into play. You know, we're elected by the people of our community.
What, are we gonna get a petition?
Oh, I knew that was coming. Well, it is the petition, the survey is, but it, it shows an intent, but we still have to govern the money.
Right. So.
I knew that was coming.
Well played. So I, I like the way you guys did it last time. You know, I think simplistic questions are imperative. You know, there's another entity in our community that asks some very detail-oriented questions when they put out surveys. And I think a lot of this community has been surveyed to death. And so I think when we put our survey out, that, that we ask simplistic questions, and I think we did that last time. They're not overly complicated, simplistic questions, yes, no, type of questions. So I think, you know, again, before it goes out, obviously it comes before the board, but I think all the input from all of the department heads and even some of the committees would be helpful in certain areas. I mean, I think, I think the rec committee should have some input on, on the questions that they want to ask. I think public safety should have, you know, maybe some questions. So maybe that would be the only change is maybe getting some committee input on the, on the questions that, that get asked because each committee has a certain area of the village that they're responsible for, so.
I'd kind of like to see it more simple, though not more complex.
That's what I mean.
Because they're just, I don't know.
When they're too long, people lose interest in filling them out.
Well, and, and I'll just be perfectly honest, when the school district sends out a survey sometimes and the question itself is a paragraph long.
Yeah.
By the time you're done reading that paragraph, you're like, um, let me go back and read that again to make sure. And then the actual answers are complex. So simplistic questions, I think, drive better results, in my opinion, especially in something like this.
Okay, well, it's good information to know because it, it costs, I think it was like two thousand bucks for the survey postcard to go out. So it's something that we'll have to budget for.
Are we, are we talking about doing this now or are we?
No, I would include it in our budget, so it's gonna come up again in our budget planning process.
Budget day.
Yeah, we'll talk about it on budget day.
Correct. And now, correct me if I'm wrong, you went online to do, take that survey, correct?
Yeah, and we also had hard copies available here.
Perfect. Well, thank you for keeping on top of this and, and really providing, I think, quarterly or whenever you give us.
I think I did buy any, well.
These are good updates.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. Nine recreational items, Idyllwild Park. Number one, park signage.
Thank you. Looking to replace the two park entrance signs for Idyllwild Park. These signs are located at the entrance of Harbor Lights Road and Festival Way and the Lakeview Drive and Cotton Drive entrance. Current signs are weathered, not very visible from the road, and still have Home of Duck Creek, Pop Warner Football on both signs. New sign design would be uniformed with the existing sign that is at Vicary Dockery Park. Therefore, larger in scale than the signs currently at Idyllwild. Sign at the entrance of Harbor Lights Road and Festival Way, which you have in, on your screen there, that would be a single-faced sign with the Idyllwild Park design, which is, says Idyllwild Park with the mascot. And then the sign at the entrance of Lakeville Drive and Cotton Drive would be a double-faced sign. And that sign would also have our park regulations sign underneath the Idyllwild Park facing Cotton Drive. Again, these signs would be larger in scale and be more visible. Last week, Tuesday, June fourteenth, the Parks Recreation, Forestry, and Trails Committee did approve and recommend the sign design and locations. They did request that the park regulations sign where it says no animals allowed have a slightly larger font than the rest of the park regulations. So made that change, checked with the sales rep, and there was no additional cost to make that change. So that no animals allowed is a slightly larger font on that park regulation sign. Three quotes from three sign companies were given for this project. Reinhold Sign Services on Homegrown Way in Green Bay was the lowest quote at seventeen thousand five hundred and sixty-five for both signs. In the twenty-two budget, we have the fund twenty, the two twenty-five, this stadium tax refund. We do have eighteen thousand on hold to be used towards signage at Idyllwild Park. So we're slightly under budget to use stadium tax dollars for this project.
You said these signs match with the Doctors Park?
Correct.
With, even with the metal scrapping and everything on them and?
Correct, that's what's at, yeah.
Good, and I'm assuming you're gonna follow that through even to Calavera? Or any of our parks will always have the same?
Correct, that was just, yeah, that's the idea. That's, that's the plan for all of our, Calavera Park would hopefully be the next park that we would update the sign in chat.
So these are the current ones right here, right? Because that, that font is not that readable.
Right.
No.
That, that, that's not that readable. I do like that, I, I don't know that I like all the park regulations on it. It just seems kind of preachy, especially, are they, are any of them enforced?
Well, yeah, I mean, those are regulations. I mean, those are, that's got the curfew, no animals allowed, you know, no glass receptacles.
Are they enforced?
Our, our police is available and.
Okay.
To enforce, or to call out there by residents to enforce it if they see a dog that's running, you know, residents will call.
Um, I don't, I, I don't know how you get around that. I just, it just looks kind of preachy, but I, I do like, I don't like the old font because it's not readable. But the park regulation thing, I just, I, I don't like that.
Trustee, the reason that the Park and Rec Committee wanted the park regulations on that particular sign going to Cotton Drive is because there's no park regulation signs further into the park.
Okay.
Where when you come off of Harbor Lights Road on Festival Way, you drive a little bit further and the regulation sign is there, just a few feet from the actual Idyllwild Park. So it didn't make sense to put the park regulations on that sign since you have the park regulation that stands on its own just a few feet further down along Festival Way as you enter the park.
Well, the first thing is, the more readable font is gonna be there now, right? That's good. But now you're adding the park regulations to one of them in Idyllwild or?
Just, just one of them as you turn onto Cotton Drive.
Okay.
Facing Cotton Drive. Because as you go further down into the shelter, you got Diamond Three-Four, you don't have a regulation sign down that area.
So if you don't list some of the regulations, you, you have a hard time enforcing things at all if you don't list them.
True.
So if they're listed, law enforcement. Yeah, I, I know.
It's huge.
But at least law enforcement has something to stand on to enforce.
You can't say, I, I didn't see it, I didn't, where is it? Where's it at? Well, it's right here, it's, you know, very present.
It's, it's really present at our dump site out here too. It's a Swamaco residence only and.
It just seems massive. I just say that.
It's huge.
I'm looking at that and thinking, that's a big sign. We're, we got a, we got a, I'm guessing a six-foot adult and then we've got another six foot, that's twelve, sixteen feet high. How high is it total?
Twelve feet high.
Twelve feet.
Twelve feet high? I guess a hundred and forty-four, I see that now. But this sign just seems, I like this sign better.
I like that sign.
Because this sign.
I do like that sign.
The font is good. And I, I have to agree. I mean, having the, the park regulations so proud right there does seem like an in-your-face sort of thing, but I also understand you need to inform people what the regulations are. But I'm curious, and maybe you covered this already, but why is it on one sign and not the other?
Because as.
Standalone sign at the entrance of Festival Foods and Harbor Lights.
Okay.
You go past our entrance sign and, I don't know, maybe fifty yards down the driveway on the left-hand side, there's a standalone park regulation sign.
How big is it? I mean, I pass by it every day, how big is it?
Uh, it's probably like, I'd say three by fours.
It's right there, it's on your screen.
Three by four.
What's wrong with that sign?
That's what, I was gonna.
Okay, I'm just, just throw out there.
That's why there's no regulation sign going in on the Harbor Lights entrance, but there is going on the other one. You could do the same thing on Cotton Drive. You could get rid of the rules on the sign and put it, you know, fifty yards down the road and have it there. No matter what, it covers what the law requires with these, if they intend to make it noticeable to.
And you'll combine it so you don't have the little no-glass containers.
You could probably get rid of that no-glass containers.
It's old.
So I, I fully, I fully agree with both trustees that, you know, when we look at the sign and, and these are the entrance to our, to our park, it should be simple, simple, look nice. And again, if it's fifty feet down or a hundred feet down that we have these other signs that's being shown right now, I think that would look a lot nicer. And I don't think the cost differential, differential will be that great. I would replace probably all of the signs to make sure everything's uniform. You know, this one doesn't look like it's faded at all, but I'm sure when you put it up against one of the new signs, I bet you it is. There's some fading going on.
Did you have a particular problem with glass? Did you have a particular problem with glass containers? Is that why it's listed twice?
That's an old sign that's been there forever, so it's just always there.
There.
I will say on the height, I remember the Vicory Doctor Park signage project and remember, you know, looking at the sketches with the little person next to it and thinking that it was a massive sign, but once they installed it, when it's off the road, it's really not as intrusive as it, it appears on a sketch like this. That's my two cents on the, the height.
You can see that.
I'd say the sign at Cotton Drive is, it's offset by probably seventy-five feet from the roadway. You gotta go beyond our walking path through the ditch, which is Alcony River, and the sign sits up on the back slope in the park. So it's a ways off from County Jail. You know, so if you go smaller than, you know, the largest here, it really won't appear to be too big of a sign.
I, I just, that park reg, uh, it's so huge and it's so preachy for a nice little day in the park.
Nick, the, the park regulation. Sign itself, that's separate, correct?
Correct.
So we could probably just order this and not attach this to the post and have our, a different post set up, right?
I have a, I have a good inkling that this will be the same cost. If you put this on two separate posts, because those twelve-foot or however, those have to be, not twelve-foot, those have to be sixteen-footers at least. The cost of those posts, if you went down to a smaller post like the other sign, so duplicated Idlewild signs at both entrances, put the park regulations on a separate sign, I bet you their cost would not be any, about the same cost. Maybe some labor differences, but that's about it.
Does it have to be that big?
I don't think it has to be that big either. I think you match, however big the current one is, I think that looks fine.
Yeah. It's, I just, there are parks, I, I just don't want to get too preachy.
So what I'm hearing is the current park regulation sign that's on one side of the park coming on Festival Way, put that on the Cotton Drive side.
Right. And just include, oh, I see that, it's double glass cleaner, yeah, I, I think that looks great.
And so this font is like the Vicory Doctor one and I, I like this, this is a nice sign.
Yeah.
That's a nice sign.
Keep things clean at entrances and, I mean, as long as the regulations are at both entrances somewhere, law enforcement has their, the ability to enforce, so.
The, um, so now Calavera.
We're not doing Calavera.
Oh, we're not, okay, cause this one.
Not at this time.
That's not readable.
Yeah, I know. You can't even read it from the road.
You can read the regulations, but you can't read, yeah.
Hopefully that'll be the next part that we can.
I, I think it's great that, you know, it was slowly but surely that we're, that we're standardizing. We standardized, you know, downtown Swamaco signs, we're standardizing these signs. I think it's great that, you know, that we have uniformity across our community now.
So.
So is there a motion?
Yeah, we'd be, you know, we understand what you're saying. Perhaps we modify that first motion just not to exceed eighteen thousand, since that is what we budgeted for. And then if moving that park regulation signage to new posts, uh, costs a little bit more money, then we're still covered as long as we're not exceeding eighteen thousand. I think that would be appropriate, should the village board be agreeable to that.
Well, is that park regulation sign, is that going to be smaller though?
We heard you, yeah, we'll, we'll match it with.
You'll match.
That other one, whatever size that is.
And then we're, we're talking about matching, um, having some matching posts on that other sign then, to kind of match this or?
Not if it's expensive, I mean, it's.
I would just, I would just copy whatever, whatever we got.
Andy's guys can put four-by-fours in. Yeah.
We can do that ourselves, so I don't think there should be too much additional cost, if any.
It should be cheaper.
Yeah, that's, I figured we could just do that part.
So is there a motion? So Minister Kaker wants the motion changed to that first number to be eighteen.
Not to exceed eighteen.
Not to exceed, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the signage for Idlewild Park, um, not to exceed from Reinhold Sign Services, not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars.
So I have a motion on the floor to accept the quote with the modifications discussed, uh, to Reinhold Sign, not to exceed eighteen thousand. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Eckert, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Very good.
And then, so there needs to be a second. Anytime we are using stadium district funds, you have to pass a resolution with it. That's just the rules.
So I'll make a motion to approve the use of stadium tax funds to not exceed eighteen thousand dollars for upgrading the Idlewild Park signage.
I have a motion on the floor to, uh, approve the use of stadium tax funds, not to exceed the eighteen thousand dollars for upgrading Idlewild Park signage. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is this, we have to do roll call for these?
Well, it is budgeted, I don't think you have to.
Uh, roll call.
Yeah, one and down.
Okay. Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Eckert?
Aye.
Trustee Ward?
Aye.
Trustee Ryan?
Aye.
Trustee Roma?
Aye.
Hats off also for getting three bids, appreciate that. All right, another recreational item, nope, that's it. Both of those are done. Uh, discussion on any future agenda items? Is there anything?
Um, you know, I just wanted to bring this up, um, I don't do social media much. I do check out, uh, our Facebook page every once in a while. And I noticed there's some real estate ads on ours and I don't think they're like Facebook ads. I think somebody else is posting homes for sale. I guess I don't mind if a real estate, real, realtor is doing that in Swamaco. But now I've noticed a couple of weeks ago, there was one for Howard Home for Sale and it was on our.
Are they posting in the comments?
Is it a paid ad?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's a paid ad. It was, you know, here's our village board meeting, here's this that happened in the village. And then it was from a, a local realtor here in the community and it didn't say, that I noticed, I was trying to check it out the best I could, that it was, was sponsored. And I think someone, just like you would post your, what happened in there and it was a home for sale. The last couple of them in Swamaco, then one was for like a, a home in Bellevue or Howard, that was on our.
It's definitely not coming from our feed.
Our feed, I think someone just like you'd make a comment on it, like on the Swamaco page, was making a comment, but it was to sell a home.
Are they making it, so are they?
Are they commenting on a post?
No, I think they're, they're making, yeah, like are making a, a comment on our own, on our own feed. I'll have to go back and look at it.
If you can screenshot it, I'd be curious, because I haven't seen it.
And you look at the comments when.
All the time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Interesting. And if they are commenting, there's really not, there's really not much we can do about commenting on posts. Public forum.
Can you, can you?
You can, you can restrict comments altogether.
Right.
But you don't want to get into picking and choosing which comments you're hiding.
I don't see any as I just spin through it.
It might be a paid ad somehow.
Even that's not showing up on mine.
Take a screenshot of it, Jason, if you ever see it again.
Next time I see it, I'll.
Okay.
Um, I guess the only other thing was, we talked about stop signs, uh, on Pine Lane potentially. Is there a process or does somebody need to come before?
Yeah, I think public health and safety is the correct committee to look at, uh, signage.
And is, does that fall underneath you, Andy?
No, that would go through Mark.
It does go through Mark, okay. You just put them up.
Yeah, we didn't install them and I would provide, uh, some information to Mark as regards to when it's useful to install a forward stop.
Like is there DOT guidance?
Okay, because that conversation came up in public health and safety. I didn't know the process and I didn't, I didn't, I guess we never really dealt with stop signs, so I'll have that added to the next agenda. Perfect, anybody else have anything? I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There's no session tonight? Or is this from last time?
Yeah, okay. I have a motion by Trustee Eckert to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Say by Trustee Andrews, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, have a great evening and stay cool.
Thank you.